Okay.
Okay.
Are we recording? Hey, good morning. Our president is not going to join us on today. We'll go ahead and get started with our pre-conference. We're now in the hand of our city clerk, Ms. Lisa Carol Lambert.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, December fifteenth. We have approval of minutes revised and corrected for December first. And also, we have minutes for December the eighth.
Good job.
Amen.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to declare the structures at thirty-eight twenty-eight Alba Club Road, ten twenty-five Hannon Road, fourteen oh three Linwood Drive East, fifty-six sixty-one King Street, seventy-one twenty-five Mobile Street, twenty-five fifty-eight Frightner Street, and seventy-two thirty-one Eleventh Street. Public notices and ordering them demolished.
I believe that our secretary, excuse me, our clerk has sent us an email regarding Linwood Drive, fourteen oh three, where the owner has sent a demolition permit, and he's demolishing it when we speak, and he's supposed to be finished by the end of this week. So I guess we can table that particular one. Is Mr. David on board this morning?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Dave?
His audio is connecting as we speak. Not sure what's going on with him. Yeah, he's still not connected.
While we're waiting on him, what about this seventy-one twenty-five Mobile Street? John, you have a Mobile Street too?
Theodore, baby. It's right there by Smalls Mortuary. Need to come out there sometime.
I give up. I didn't know that.
Wow. I got a King Street too. So you got a King Street as well.
I got a King.
Yep.
Yeah, you get down there, you get down there at Hall's Mill and Pleasant Valley, down around that area, and you got three or four districts coming together right there, pretty close together.
You showed up on the demolition list, by the way.
I didn't want this, I didn't want this number to be out of place, and this was actually a Mel in District One.
Roger.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, I guess when Mr. David comes on, we can go back to him if he has anything to say and everything.
Okay. Yeah, he's not connected to audio. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have Reggie Hill sign for agenda items zero-one eight-eight-five, zero-eight eight-eight-six, and eight-eight-seven, twenty-one eight-nine-zero, and twenty-one nine-zero-six.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, this is David with Municipal Enforcement. For some reason, I had a trouble connecting earlier.
Okay, Mr. Dave, you can go ahead.
And I apologize for the problem, but I do have some follow-up. Yes, the item that you mentioned, the Linwood, yes, if we could table that, the fourteen oh three table, Linwood Drive, table that completely. Due to, like you mentioned, he does have a permit, and he's about seventy-five percent complete on the demolition.
Okay.
And then also, if you have a moment, could we follow up on thirty-eight twenty-eight Alba Club Road? I do recommend that we table this one as well. Regretfully, we didn't catch in our initial investigation, but we did confirm last Friday that the heir to the property is residing in the structure. So therefore, we could not move forward with the demolition of the structure. Municipal enforcement will follow up through municipal court action with the owner of the property, the heir.
Okay.
Can we order it repaired? Does it need repairing?
It does need some repairs, however, the city has taken the position not to move forward with nuisance abatement actions when its owner occupied. And I regret we didn't catch this earlier, but we confirmed last Thursday that, yes, the heir to the property, Mr. Lizenbaum, is actually a resident of the structure. And yes, there is some repairs that do need to be made. It would be classified as an unsafe structure, but at this point, I would regret that we do not move forward, that we table this, that we give some more time with court action to get compliance. And I bring this up also is that the yard itself, if you look at the packet that we provided, has a tremendous amount of debris, garbage, litter. In one of the pictures, you'll see that there was a tent. And what was happening is that this place was being used as a harborage for criminal activity. It was kind of like a flop house, that people were living in tents, using drugs. And through the Mobile Police Department and Municipal Enforcement, we've cleaned that up to the point where there's nobody residing at the structure except for Mr. Lizenbaum that we're aware of at this point, and he is beginning to clean up the property, but it's very slow. So what would actually happen is if he does not take action, what I would like to do is come back only for the yard, not the structure itself, but come back with new notice to him to clean up the yard, because he has self-described himself as a hoarder. And you can see from the photographs that there's a large amount of debris in the yard. And again, I would like to come back if he does not clean up the property with a separate nuisance abatement action, just to clean up the yard.
Yeah, I probably would say, probably need to get ready to see David coming back, because this has been years of frustrations with the neighbors. And pretty much, he does not do anything. And I was shocked to say that Mr. David has stated that he's doing a little by little. But this has been years and years and years of frustration by the neighbors complaining about this property and everything. So, yeah, so we'd be looking forward to his comeback soon.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Gregory?
Oh, yeah, a question for David. I've had some things like this occur in my district as well. How long do we normally give these folks once it comes to your attention? I mean, like CJ was saying, neighbors complain for years and years, and we go through this never-ending process. But once it comes to your attention, how long do you give people like this to actually get this place cleaned up? Get his yard cleaned up?
Now, that's a good question, because our procedure is we would give them a notice of violation first in a reasonable amount of time, which in this case, he's already received his notice of violation, and he has received municipal offense tickets. Those are still pending in the court. And we are going to go back with additional municipal offense tickets to the owner of the property. Now, for the final resolution through the court system, I don't have an answer. But our standard ten-day notice for a notice of violation for trash and debris is what we would issue. And like the other item on the agenda in your district, the seventy-two thirty-one Eleventh Street, that has also been a problem in the past with the harborage of criminal activity. And we're at the point now where we can move forward. It is not occupied like this one is, and we're going to move forward with the one in your district.
So we're talking months, maybe a year?
Years, years.
Years. Well, I'm just saying, David has actually got it and looking at it. I mean, I know it's been years, but it just gets really frustrating. I know for everybody involved in it, it would be, and because the residents are always asking us, you know, when are you going to do something? This has been going on forever. Why can't you do anything? And we have trouble giving them, you know, a good answer, so.
Right, as I know yours is. But my feeling about it is that the, what gets, what takes so much time is once it gets to municipal court. It just, you know, they, we can't, we just, David can go out there and issue these notices and tickets, but we don't, there's no way to, we don't have a way to make it stick. We, it gets up to municipal, and I'm not blaming the judges. I'm not blaming the judges. I'm just saying that there's a problem with the enforcement problem. It comes once David issues the ticket. Because we've got, we've got a very weak system of actually enforcing anything. That's my, that's my opinion.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I've got one other suggestion. With this Alba Club Road, since it's before the council today, we did send notice for the condition of the yard, and this is really a question for the council, for the city council to review. Could we change the council resolution before the, and make a decision to not demolish the structure, but to authorize the city of Mobile to come in with a contractor to clean the yard? And then those costs could be fixed to the property, since the owner has made it very clear over the years that he has not taken action. We did serve notice as part of the structure, but the resolution before us is to demolish the structure. And my thoughts were to reissue a new notice and then come back in about forty-five days for just the yard.
That sounds great to me, and you know, longest, you know, I'll turn and say it's okay. But that would be great, great news, because again, this has been, I mean, I've been on council eight years, and it's been eight years I've been hearing this on September and everything. I'm pretty sure, I think John, yeah, so, I mean, and that with twelve years? Yeah, so that been, this has been going on for a while, but that sounds great to me. Anything else to say?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Essential COVID-nineteen items held over. Twenty-seven zero twenty-four ordinance to regulate food trucks.
Okay, I'd like to have this held over for sixty days. My suggestion is we hold it over for sixty days. And I'd like to ask that we have a finance committee meeting on February twelfth, immediately following the council meeting, in order to take this up once again, and we use the latest iteration that Arledge has prepared as a starting point. But I'd like to have Mr. Joe Snowden, Sean DeSmith, someone from City Legal, as well as Mr. Arledge at that meeting, so we can really get into the weeds on this and come up with something, as well as, you know, as well as the food truck people and the restaurant people. But we need to get everybody at the table and try to come up with something so we can get this off of our agenda. As I said earlier, I have not, we have really not had any response, Mr. Arledge tells me, from the administration, from the food truck operators, from the restaurateurs. And, you know, I think that, I think we need to go ahead and have the committee meet on January twelfth. We need to work through it and come up with some language that the committee can recommend to the council. We need to move forward. We've asked, we've asked the stakeholders to comment, and they have not commented.
So it must not be a problem? Yeah, just, we don't have to regulate anything. If none of the parties are involved care enough to give us some comments, we just let it go. And by the way, February twelfth is a Friday.
A Friday.
December twel- or January twelfth, which one?
January twel- January twel-
Got it.
Okay.
Hey, and John, that might be what the committee decides on January twelfth.
Yep, that's right. Got it. I'm in.
Okay.
Ms. President?
Ms. Richardson?
The last time we had a meeting on food trucks, I've got the impression that the food truck people were amenable to us changing regulations as long as we let them continue to operate as they are on private property. They don't mind being regulated when it comes down to public property, streets, city streets. But when they are on private property, they don't want all of those same regulations.
Well, they were told that they'll all apply to private property, is what they were told.
Yeah, that's, they objected specifically to the three-hundred-foot distance from restaurants. They had some objections to being regulated on public rights.
The other thing is, we talked about the Parks Department coming up with their own protocol, because that's something that my office hears about when the trucks are in and out of Medal of Honor. So we were going to look towards that to see, and therefore, it wouldn't have to be a council action for public property, especially when it came to parks. So I hope that they were being engaged in part of your committee as well, you know, for input.
No, no input.
I'm sure there's ideas on how to make that work, and that they would have to get permission and whatnot, and clean up after themselves, things that are, what we hear about are problematic with that industry coming into parks.
Yeah, but we haven't, we haven't heard any, as far as I know, we haven't heard any.
Right, well, we're talking about it now, so, and you've got a committee coming up, but it would be good to have, if there are some protocols in place.
That's why I asked-
Ideas of protocols for parks.
Smith attend.
Great.
But, but, but I think John's point is a good point. It may be that the only people in town who are interested in regulating this are the people on this, you know, the people on the city council.
Hello?
Well, when you get complaints in public space, if it's not something that our office has to do, what is the city's protocol? So I would like to know that.
Tell them not to complain if they're not willing to participate. That's all.
Oh, you mean citizens? They're looking for the city to help with that, with the noise, the mess it makes, the, um, and where they're located.
Generally speaking, we're not talking about citizens when we talk about trucks.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I mean, you know, we're talking about the Downtown Alliance, we're talking about restaurants downtown, complaining about them dropping their trash on their sidewalks. So these guys need to step up. They're all professional.
I agree.
All right.
All right, let's go.
Rock and roll. Twelfth of January.
Madam Clerk?
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight zero four one, ordinance deemed vacant, landlocked parcel on O'Connor Street and Leslie Avenue not now needed for public or municipal purpose and authorizing the sale to Helena Massey. Eighty-eight zero four two, ordinance deemed in property at nine oh one Lyon Street not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing sale to Alabama Community College System. Forty-seven nine-nine, declare the structure at sixteen fifty-three Dublin Street. A public nuisance and ordered demolished. Zero-one eight-eight-five, authorized agreement with Mobile Baykeeper for the EPA Gulf of Mexico Trash Free Waters Grant Project. Zero-eight eight-eight-six, approved purchase order to Protech Video for remote camera system software and annual license. Zero-eight eight-eight-seven, approved purchase order for annual license renewal for forensic and intelligence extraction decryption software. Twenty-one eight-eight-eight, authorized contract with Sawgrass Consulting for engineering, design, and construction inspection services for twenty-twenty Pago and twenty-twenty-one CIP resurfacing.
Hold on. Is Nick Amberger with us today?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Nick, I wrote, I wrote the mayor, you and all of, you know, and Jim, regarding a schedule for current resurfacing. Where are we with current resurfacing? And I haven't heard anything.
Counselor, I provided it to you, and you responded back with a thank you, so we assume that you were satisfied with our response.
I forgot what that was.
We can resend it again.
Okay, resend, resend it.
No problem.
All right.
Madam Clerk?
Twenty-one eight-eight-nine, authorized contract with HM Young and Associates for consulting engineers for fire station number three mechanical improvement. Twenty-one eight-nine-zero, authorized performance contract with Visit Mobile to grow and develop tourism associated with the discovery of the Clotilda. Twenty-three eight-nine-one, accept these for the acquisition of property for the McGregor Ave- Yes?
Hey, if you can just put me down as a sponsor along with the twenty-one eight-nine oh, please. Add me as a sponsor also.
Add me, add me also, Madam Clerk.
Let's just all make it unanimous.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, add everybody.
Just like, is David Clark on the call by any chance on the Zoom?
No, not this morning.
Yes, yes.
Oh, he is?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
If we could ask David just to give us an outline of what they are planning to do with this performance contract that is outside of what they normally would be doing anyway? This is kind of a special kind of a contract?
It's three pieces.
Good morning, counsel. This is a game changer. It couldn't come at a better time. It aligns with what we're trying to do. And it's truly, I think, life-changing to Afri-Town and our surrounding areas. But in essence, there's three components to this contract. One, a clotilda film that Savannah College Art Design Pro SCAD Pro will design fifteen-to-twenty-minute documentary through about a five-month process to deliver by May twenty-four. The second part is a brand immersive sensory experience on a Phase One, Phase Two, water tour, land tour, all things Afri-Town and Clotilda, to improve tourism ideas for Afri-Town where they benefit and everyone else benefits, but primarily for the Clotilda and Afri-Town. So a brand immersive experience that should be concluded with those deliverables by, let's just call it, April one. And then the third part of this is a wayfinding opportunity for all things arts, cultural, history, all things Mobile downtown-centric and throughout Mobile in terms of wayfinding opportunities, how tourists, how residents connect to the opportunities of Mobile, Afri-Town, and those kind of things. It could also include in that component innovative apps for wayfinding ideas and like that. So, for example, these are the brightest students of the world with professors. I've read some case studies, Google, for example. They teamed with Google to design, ask the whys of how do people research and find things? That would be an example of what wayfinding would be. So this is a really tremendous opportunity, and we really appreciate your work consideration.
Hey, David, I know on the film you mentioned SCAD. Are they working on the other two components, or are you bringing in somebody else to do that, to work with you guys? Or how are you handling that?
With the first two, Councilman Gregory, who, SCAD's coming in, teaming with the Afri-Town Collaborative, those other major stakeholders who want to be involved with the city, with the county. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I'd like to also state that I do agree with you, Mr. David, that this is a great, a great game changer for the city of Mobile. When I first got on council, you know, I got criticized by my own district, you know, about, you know, talking about Afri-Town, that the city should invest into it. And the thing about it is that, you know, we have to have tourism here to have more tax base before we can do more things within the city. And, you know, Montgomery is a prime example, you know, of the Lynchon Museum. Montgomery flew into Atlanta, drove over to Montgomery, then went back to Atlanta. But, you know, one thing about it, when people come here, we need to try to have something here to also keep them here to stay overnight, because many people do travel to Montgomery, and then they jet back out, and they, you know, head back to Nashville or Atlanta and everything. But this is, will be a great game changer for our city, bringing many visitors into our city. And I'm glad that the council has all joined in to be sponsored, because again, this is something in our own backyard that nobody else can really say that they have in their own backyard. We have a treasure here that we need to make sure that it is very interested, interesting, educated, educational, and pretty much, you know, I'm not going to say fun, but when you have activities like that and it gain people's interest, that withdraws money. I heard one person said one time, "Fun is money." So if you have anything that is interesting for the youth and also for the adults, you know, that would bring more revenue, more interest into the city of Mobile, we're going to have a bigger tax base. So again, I am so proud and glad to see this project going forward, not only pushing Afri-Town up front, but also our city in whole. Thank you.
If I could comment?
Ms. Rich?
Gina, are you not done? I don't want to interrupt.
Oh, I just said, for David. For those of us who went to Savannah, I guess it's been now a couple of years ago. It's kind of hard to keep up, but for the chamber leadership trip, we did a whole segment on SCAD. So we were able to see what they can do. I didn't, their program was just amazing. So I think working with this group, David, is a good move. They'll do a great job, and, you know, I think bring the clotilda to life and do what we want it to do. And then plus, I don't know if they are, they are as expensive as maybe some other groups would be. So working with these students, you know, I think the educational aspect of it is a good move, so, so thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Gregory, I thought you were finished.
No.
Thank you. David, I would like to thank you for being so responsive to my questions and getting all the components to this contract. When I first read it, you know, strictly a performance contract, but the minute I realized that the Board of Directors had already done all the vetting and all involved, I immediately contacted the appointment for District Six and just filled in everything. And I agree, this needs to be done, you know, very, very professional. The city of Mobile is in the limelight, so to speak, on this aspect, and it can make a big difference for us, and especially that the Smithsonian and the community from the bottom up engages in this and really is a part of the equation, because it is the community's fabric. And again, thank you very much for sending us all that documentation and the different benchmarks that the group will go through. Please keep us involved and up to date on what's transpiring. So it's very exciting for the community, which we all represent, and thank you again.
We appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
Ms. President?
Ms. Richardson?
Yes, we were on our leadership trip in Savannah. Before we left, we convened to go over those things we believe that would be beneficial to Mobile. Those things that they were doing in Savannah that we believe would be beneficial in Mobile. And tourism, what they had done with their tourism. The city is just about the size of Mobile. They're smaller. It's not, it's not a large city, but what they've, what they've, what they have done is just tremendous. But as we close out, it seems to me that we agreed that the clotilda was at the top of our list on what we need, need to come home and focus on. And David was at the, at the front of that discussion then. And I'm so glad that he is at the front of making it happen. This is, this is a no-doubt moment for me. I believe that David is going to see it through. I don't believe he's going to go out in the middle of the water and turn around and come back. I believe he's going to see it through, and I believe at the very end of the process, we would have a product that not only we would be proud of in Mobile, but people from across the nation would come and see what we are doing.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three eight-nine-one, accept these for the acquisition of property for the McGregor Avenue widening project. Thirty-one eight-nine-two, authorize a grant application to National Fitness Campaign for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Fit Lot Grant. Thirty-seven eight-nine-three, approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity.
Madam Clerk? Yeah, yeah, I think we got Ms. Smith on the, on the end, on the line. Could we have her to talk about the, this fitness campaign of this grant, eight-nine-two? Ms. Smith?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, so the National Fitness Association, they come in, and it's very different from the Fit Lot, which you've all seen, AARP Fit Lot at Seals. This is more of a, if you've seen the CrossFit-like setup, is more for the younger, more fit setup, younger crowd. And what they do is, it costs- And what they do is it costs about a hundred and forty thousand dollars per set. What they do is allow you to apply for a thirty thousand dollar grant that goes towards the construction of the equipment. And so they, and I can share it with you all, they have, they did an analysis of the city and locations that they thought would be good basis off of usage and they pulled a lot of data that was actually very good information. And so there were five sites that we've identified. And so over the next five to seven years, we wanted to be able to include that in some of our work that we're doing. And so I submitted for a hundred and fifty over the next five years being each set a thirty thousand dollar grant.
Could you tell us what those five sites are?
One is Hackmeyer, Langin, and these were ones that we already had master plans for. It was Langin, Hackmeyer. I believe Medal of Honor. It was potential for Public Safety Memorial.
And Sage, Shonda and Sage as well.
And Sage, thank you, Jim. And we were looking at possibly Cooper Riverside, but we were worried about the, we needed to make sure that that foundation would be able to hold the equipment.
Okay. In a course.
Change over time, though.
Oh. Any question, counsel? All right, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Well, it seems to me that you're going to need to come on, come on the east now. You, you know, you have focused on the west side. You've got great park from the east side. Yeah, you got one out of six. I'm saying you need to come on, come on across. Keep going, keep going.
Recede.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Thirty seven, eight nine three, approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Chetanya Nicholson, doing business Busy Bee's Carrier and Transportation Service for Shuttle Service. Essential COVID nineteen items being introduced for the first time. Zero eight, eight nine four, eight nine five, eight nine six, eight nine seven, approving purchase orders to AutoNation Ford. CDW Government for Fire Wall Security Appliances. Approved purchase order to Atlantic Video Corporation to remove and replace video display wall in MPD Joint Ops Center, twenty five thousand four hundred eighty dollars. And to Dana Safety Supply for five mini three line message board signs and trailer, seventy four thousand four hundred fifty five dollars.
Could we get some more information on eight nine seven? Exactly what is that?
These are trailer mounted message boards like you see alongside the interstate, says highway closed ahead.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Forty, eight nine eight, eight nine nine, nine hundred, nine oh one, nine oh two, nine oh three and nine oh four, declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty eight, nine zero five, authorize approval of weeds group sixteen oh nine. Twenty one, nine zero six, authorized contract with Corporate Environmental Risk Management for an EPA Cooperative Agreement with a Brownfields Assessment Grant Africa Town Community, two hundred ninety thousand four hundred dollars. Zero three, nine zero eight, reappoint Cody Adair to the Mobile Museum of Art Board. Call, this is an addition, I'm sorry. Okay, call for public hearings, forty one, nine zero seven, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to, to want to appear for doing business, True Love Transportation, scheduled January fifth. Announcement.
I don't have an announcement, but if, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up, but on oh one, eight eight five, which is the agreement with the Mobile Baykeepers, I was really pleased to see that they'll do education besides the waterway cleanups. And I was wondering if someone in the administration could tell me if this is also an agency that community groups could accent for, you know, cleanups and things like we used to do with Keep Mobile Beautiful. Because I know out West, that's something that is missing, probably citywide, that there was coordination with getting cleanups in neighborhoods and in, you know, rights of way. Would, would this group be amenable? Is that part of it? It wasn't in the document that I read. But they talked about education, so that in itself is sort of education. But if, or anyone present that can talk about that? I mean, I'm ready to vote for it and it's the second read. I, I just, it just occurred to me.
This is Rosemary again from Engineering. There's going to be public education and outreach in the Mobile County Public School System. And they are going to be talking about the importance of, you know, litter cleanup. And they're going to be teaching the kids and working with teachers about doing water quality monitoring and things like that with the students. I think there are a few cleanup schedules that per se cleanups with community groups. Those things, you know, outside of the Three Mile Creek watershed are not planned.
They're not part of this, okay. Okay, so it's really not, it's not something that a council office could call on them to do any kind of cleanup or area unless it's in the Three Mile Creek. Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct, for this part.
Okay. And this is a five year contract with this group?
It's a two year.
Two year. I thought it was for a total of five hundred thousand and something. Did I, I might have that wrong. I don't know why I thought it was so much, it was a big one that was multi, many, multi years.
The overall grant is for five hundred thousand and part of it is for Baykeeper. Part of it's for Baykeeper, part of it goes to install new devices to the Osprey Initiative, which has already come through. New improved, more durable litter devices. And we've got a third contract, which will be coming through to install litter capture devices, marine debris interceptor devices in inlets in city streets. So we've got a third.
So the hundred and seventy two K that goes to Mobile Baykeepers, that's strictly in the schools and schools that interface with the Three Mile Creek, is that, do I have that right?
That's right, that's right. This is a portion of the grant.
Okay, thank you. Now I, I get that better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Dave.
So the ones we're going to take up today are the public nuisances, the removal of weeds and the reappointment. Right?
Right, and are we going to change the language, Chris, on that, on that one in District Three? And table the other? I know we're going to table the other, but we don't change the language in that first one?
Oh, for the Alba Club.
If it's already been noticed with this language, I think you're going to have to start over.
Yeah, I would think you would have to renotice.
Yeah, table and fine.
Yeah, we're going to table both of them.
We, we have scratched demolish before and replaced it with repair in the same day to order it, to at least establish the nuisance status.
I, I need to talk to David Dogg.
Every time we delay things, every time, it just adds a year to it. I mean, this is there really are several out there that are way over, way, way, way overdue and we just maybe we take our chance of getting sued by this person who is hanging out in a house that's falling down. But, but maybe that's a chance we have to take.
Well, he don't show at the court no way, so.
There we go. I, I got it.
We need to follow the law, whatever the law is.
I think that David wanted to get the city to come in and clean up the property itself. And then talked about, you know, tabling the other. I, I don't know, but it, the momentum to do the property, he said they had already been noticed, unless I misunderstood, so.
David, speaking, there's David.
But any delay that does, it does get really backed up again and since this has been going on so long.
Mr. David, are you still there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I, I just want to follow up. We do have the authority in city code to process a nuisance abatement and declare the property a public nuisance in order to be cleaned up. It's just, we have not done that by itself. Normally it's part of an overall package of a securing or a demolition. In this case, it's unique because we, we want to step back and not demolish the structure because it's occupied by an heir who is an owner of the property. But the notice did go out and you can see it in your packet that the yard is overgrown with high weeds, grass are covered with litter, debris and junk. The notice did go out, but I, I understand completely, and that's why I brought it up, that one, this is something that we haven't done before, just clean up a yard. And two, the resolution that was submitted does say demolition. And it, and from a legal perspective, it may be reasonable to go back and renotice and then come back before hearing public hearing for just cleaning the yard.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, if our attorney can really just look into that in a little bit more details and see if there's any kind of way, will you, please let us, or let me know, or let us know before ten thirty. If they, like Mr. Williams said, you know, delays or something, it's for another eight, twelve months and et cetera. And this, you know, been going on for years and everything, but is there any kind of way to our attorney and the city attorney is also, you know, let's try to make a way, if possible.
Maybe we can nominate it as the number one of twelve hundred houses.
And now, now from the council?
Yeah.
Ms. Gregory?
I just wanted to let you all know that I have a proclamation today for St. Paul's. As you all know, they are the five A team champions, so their coach, Steve Mast, will be on with us. The kids are actually in exams, so they can't be online, but hopefully they will be able to see the, the video of the meeting, so they'll be able to at least get a look at that. And we'll have proclamations for all the kids as well.
And other council members? Do we have anything from the administration? Well, if not, I'll see you all in about forty four minutes at ten thirty.